Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the special meeting in the Independent School District 279 School Board on August 13th. Pursuant to statutes 13DO21 in the current state of emergency, this special meeting, the Independent School District 279's board will be conducted via electronic means. This video conference consisted with current state and federal guidelines. Superintendent McIntyre and myself have determined that due to the health pandemic and declaration, a meeting format allowing for open in-person attendance is not practical at this time. As a result, it is unfeasible for at least one board member, the soup, or general counsel to be physically present at the special meeting location is also not feasible for members of the public to attend at the meeting location. Members of the public may monitor the meeting electronically via this livestream, and an archive recording this meeting will also be available on the district website. Our next board meeting is on August 25th. That is the planned when we will go back live. That also coincides with our teachers going back into the buildings. The special meeting in the Independent School District 279 is called to order at 6:02 PM on August 13th, 2020. Board members, joining us by video conference, please respond when I call your name. Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton.
Here.
Director Heather Douglas.
Here.
Director Jackie Mosqueta-Jones.
Here.
Director Tanya Simons.
Here.
Superintendent Corey McIntyre.
Here, thank you.
And I, Mike Ostafi, am present. Superintendent McIntyre, General Counsel Tim Palmetier, and the three highest ranking applicants for the interim board seat due to a vacancy, John Bristol, Thomas Brooks, and Miyaman Kuegley are also logged into this video conference. The purpose of this evening's special meeting is to fill a board vacancy. The outcome will be the selection of an individual to fill said vacancy on the school board. And Superintendent McIntyre and Mr. Palmetier, will you please proceed with providing background and process information, please?
All right, thank you, Chair Ostafi, and welcome, everybody. Welcome to our viewing audience as well. On June 23rd, 2020, Jessica Craig announced her resignation from the school board, and under Minnesota law, the board is required to fill the vacancy by appointment pending a special election on November 3rd to fill the remaining term of the vacancy. The appointment process established in Osseo area schools invites eligible persons to submit their application temporarily serve on the board pending a special election to fill the seat. We received 21 applications, and I'd like to thank every person who expressed interest in supporting the district through service on the board. I would like to congratulate our three finalists, who have been invited to briefly address the board tonight. The work of the school board is not easy, particularly in our present times, and it requires commitment, long hours, and a willingness to make difficult decisions that are in the interest of all of our students' families. So again, I thank each of the three finalists tonight for your willingness to take on this important task until the seat is filled through the special election. Now I'll turn it over to Tim Palmetier, District General Counsel, who will briefly outline the selection process that we will go through this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre, the school board, and our candidates here tonight. Policy 203 and its accompanying procedures establish the appointment process for temporarily filling a vacancy on the board. Superintendent McIntyre just alluded to our selection process allows for persons who are eligible to serve on the board to submit applications. And as he also indicated, we received 21 applications for the vacant position. As required by the procedure, board members were asked to provide their top three selections from 21 applicants. The selections were tallied to identify the top three candidates, and those candidates are here with us tonight, and they are John Bristol, Thomas Brooks, and Miyaman Kuegley. Each of our candidates this evening will have five minutes to address the school board on why they believe they should be appointed to temporarily fill the vacant position. School board policy and procedures do not establish a Q and A process, so there will not be questions that are going to be following presentations. After the candidates have completed their presentations, the board will discuss their preferences for appointment. If it appears from the discussions that there is consensus, the board can entertain at that point a nomination for a consensus candidate, and they will conduct a roll call vote to effectuate that candidate's appointment. If it appears that there is not consensus, the final candidate will be selected by written ballot. The written ballots will be submitted to me in the form of an email to my email accounts as the school board members are aware of. And once I receive those emails from each of the five current board members, I will announce the votes of each member. And Sherri Lincoln will record those votes. In the event that there is a tie, the school board will conduct a second vote by written ballot, selecting only from the top two candidates from the first round. The candidate receiving the majority of the votes at the end of the voting will be formally appointed to the board, and a resolution will be prepared by Ms. Lincoln. The seating of that board member will await a 30-day period where there could be a petition filed with the board to challenge that particular acknowledgement or decision. So the individual would not be seated until 30 days after the resolution is passed. So I'll turn that back over to Chair Ostafi at this point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palmetier. With that, the three highest ranking applicants have been identified and will now have five minutes each to address the board on why they should be selected to fill the vacant seat for approximately the next two months. And I will call on each individual in alphabetical order by last name. So Mr. John Bristol, please unmute your microphone and begin when you are ready. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Ostafi, Superintendent McIntyre, Mr. Palmetier, members of the board, and viewing community. Thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening concerning my desire to assist the district by serving on the board for this temporary period until the community can elect a new board member for this seat in November. I've been a resident in our school district since 2003, and I'm the proud parent of two sons, Jack and Ben, who are graduates of the Maple Grove High School. I'm grateful to all of the teachers and the staff that helped them from their first days in kindergarten through their graduations. They were well-prepared, with Jack having graduated from Iowa State this year and Ben leaving to start his sophomore year next week already at the University of North Dakota. During the time that they worked their way through their time in the district, I was involved in helping them and their classmates. I worked on fundraising, spent time as a coach, and later served as the president of Maple Grove Football Booster Club, where we raised a lot of money to support the program at all levels, brought in speakers from the community to help the athletes develop as leaders, perform charity events, and we worked to ensure that the athletes brought credit to their team and to the community as a whole. During that time, I developed a real strong appreciation for the role of all the stakeholders in our school community. The teachers, who work far more hours and much harder than many people appreciate; the support staff to keep the school safe and operating properly; the administration, who worked tirelessly to help deliver the programs to the benefit of the community; the parents, so many that seem to work almost a second job volunteering and working so hard for the benefit of not only their own children but others as well; and the community at large, who was working to raise and donate money, provide careers for the students, and for so much support. I grew up in St. Louis Park, it's down the road. And after I spent my time in my military service, I coached at the high school level for a number of years. During that time, I learned much about the challenges students, teachers, and parents face. I learned a lot about how public schools provide intangible opportunities to many students that they would not be able to find elsewhere. I learned the importance of sticking with every student, for they all had a great gift waiting to be unwrapped. I also learned that there are many lessons learned in losses as there are in wins, and that there are sometimes a tough fair grade can be as great of an experience as a perfect score. My business career in education has been focused on communication, team building, problem solving, and leadership. In order to lead high-performing teams, the ability to apply decision-making models and to think critically about opportunities is absolutely as important as being charismatic and positive. But the single most important quality is to listen carefully for understanding. It's that last attribute that I believe I can bring to the board for this short tenure that I would be honored to serve. There are many challenges ahead as plans fluctuate in response to the ever-changing threats of the pandemic, as well as the economic and social pressures that are weighing on the district even in good times. You can expect me to be a thoughtful listener and to ask good questions to help facilitate the arrival of a solid decision. I come with no agenda, no specific issue that I wish to promote, with the exception of the broadly accepted goal to improve student outcomes. I have read and embraced the guide to serving as a school board member for the Osseo area schools, as well as the bylaws and the standards. I have the time and the skills to serve in this temporary capacity. I thank you for your time this evening and ask you for your decision to appoint me to support the district in this capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Bristol. Next up is Mr. Thomas Brooks. Mr. Brooks, you have five minutes.
Hello, Chair Ostafi, board members, Superintendent McIntyre, community members. I am Thomas Brooks, and I thank you for this opportunity to address the board today regarding the current vacancy. I am honored to be considered for representing and leading in the district that my kids absolutely love. I have two kids currently enrolled in the district, entering fourth and sixth grades. I keep thinking that every time I say that I have a sixth grader, it'll get easier, and it hasn't yet. But I know that she's very much looking forward to it. From having kids in elementary, now middle school, and previously high school, I have experienced firsthand the strength of this district and its staff and resources, while also experiencing some of the shortcomings or difficulties that come with the school district, naturally having to balance limited resources, funds, and clearly disproportionate achievements between the schools in our various cities and communities across the district. Most of us have always heard it takes the village to raise a kid, and an essential component of that village is our school. I am here today because of the optimism and commitment of the board and district staff to defy the odds of statistics and systemic racism, to do better by our children of color, narrow our achievement gap, create equity for all of our families, and to recognize that success is possible and unique for each of our kids. I want to pull up my sleeves and work with this body to collectively shepherd our families through these strange and difficult times back to school this fall, to actually address and demand results in our achievement gap, and to create a district where success can be achieved regardless of the zip code or street you live on, where families across the district have access to the same quality of education, and where our highest performing schools are the highest performing in the state, and our lowest performing schools are no longer considered low performing. With all of that said, I do want to be realistic about this vacancy appointment. There is only so much you can do in such a short timeframe. Show up, serve residents, stabilize the board, ensure an adequate and representative number of voices are at the table, and support the work of the superintendent and district at hand are the priorities right now. It is important on day one that this member, new member, understands the complexities of navigating a specific and well-defined role as a school board member, but also within the confines of the Department of Education, the statute, Department of Education, Department of Health, and so on. My public policy experience to date has expanded across national, state, county, and local agencies and organizations. Highlighting just a few of these experiences, I am the current Chair of the Minnesota Board of Social Work, serve on the Minnesota Guardian at Light On Board, and serve as the Human Rights Commissioner in my city of Brooklyn Park. Full-time, I work as a global project manager in banking, where I have the opportunity to work with and learn from people located all over the world. One of the strengths of this district is our diversity, and I can say firsthand, our district is a representation of the world we are raising our kids to thrive in post-high school. From these experiences, I understand the importance of a robust discussion inclusive of all perspectives, but most importantly, creating measurable action items to achieve expected milestones. I am both with natural curiosity, optimism, and perhaps years in corporate America, but a constant drive of continuous improvement and always identifying solutions. I am data-driven, research-driven, logical, am up to ask a question, just warning you now, to get a full picture before making any decisions. I understand the responsibility I hold as a public official to be a responsible steward of public dollars and the nuances and complexities of resource allocation. I, again, just want to thank you for your time today and for this opportunity. Thank you for all you do for the district, and I hope that someday soon I'll have the opportunity to work alongside you to make this district as great as we all know it can be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Next up is Miyaman Kuegley. Miyaman, please unmute your microphone and begin when you are ready.
And I believe I'm unmuted.
Very good.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I also want to thank the board for the continuous hard work and tough decisions you have all had to make over the past few weeks. I am interested in this seat because I am a champion for our amazing district and all its beautiful diversity. I am a public health professional, a community schools expert, a first-generation Liberian who actually grew up in Brooklyn Park and a graduate of the Osseo School District. So I went to Zane Wood, Northview, and graduated from Osseo. And most importantly, I am the mother of three amazing boys who are students in our district. I have Isaac, who is seven, Isaiah, who is five, and Aiden, who is 14. I also have experience in multiple buildings, models, and levels in our district. My kiddos went to Garden City and Birch Grove for pre-K, Weaver Lake, Um Creek, Osseo Middle, and then in the fall, Osseo Senior. So I've experienced within various cities as well, as we have a large district. I have experienced facilitating out-of-school time programming and volunteering during summer programming at various schools across our district. In the next seven weeks, if you were to select me, I think that I would make wellness central to education. Healthy students make better learners, and healthy educators show up better for all of our students. As reflected in my resume and I just mentioned, I am a public health professional. I currently work as the community schools manager in a neighboring district that follows a holistic model called the Community Schools Model. And I believe that this model is very important, especially now in the time of COVID. We really lean on our partners and stakeholders to provide wraparound services for our students and onsite, really trauma-informed practices and really public health services. And so I think that this model is so important that we've had before, because as we entered a very trying time, we already had partners in place to really help with certain barriers to education and social determinants of health and mental health. As I think about our students not being able to play sports this fall, as someone who was a student athlete, I can only imagine what that toll it takes to their mental health, and I think it's really important that we have programs and practices in place for our students as they enter this school year. And again, in this very short time, if I was elected, I believe that I would be looking at systemically addressing educational relevant health disparities and how our school can really provide those wraparound services to support the whole child. I think that right now, a community's needs assessment is really important. As we have a large district, I think that all of our families and all of our students deserve to have their voices heard. We need to be really intentional with community engagement, which is something that I've done for the past decade, really, including our parents, students, and community in program planning. I think it's crucial that we continue to provide curriculum that challenges our scholars academically, but also think about the opportunity gap and how we can make sure that that doesn't widen even more. Again, I have been passionate about this school district and education. As a first-generation Liberian, my father always told me, as a black woman, I will go nowhere in life without a solid education, and that's really what I want for our students during this difficult time. So I thank you for this opportunity, and I hope that I can join you guys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's time and comments and effort in filling out the forms and coming through here. So thank you all. Absolutely great presentations. With that, I will call on each board member, and each member may choose to comment on the preferred candidate, or they may choose to provide no comment. And then after discussion, Mr. Palmetier will take us through the selection process. So first on the list is Director Mosqueta-Jones. Jackie.
Wow, comment or no comment and no questions. I'm going to choose not to comment at this time.
Okay, thank you, Director Mosqueta-Jones. Director Douglas.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I had both my phone and the call muted. I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate all three of you coming forward. This is a unique situation, and having people who value and are interested in committing to our district for such a short period of time is invaluable. So I just wanted to say thank you, and that's all that I can say.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Dawson-Walton.
I would echo that. I just, I think that, you know, the caliber of candidates we had were, it was very high caliber. And I, listening to all three of you, I mean, I think that, given that our Aladdin scape is continually shifting, I'd say especially over the last six months, obviously, I just, you know, I just commend all of you for applying, and I am, I think that, I'm just really impressed by each of what you bring to the table. So I thank you for interviewing with us and your interest in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Dawson-Walton. Director Simons.
Again, I'd echo the appreciation. We had 21 candidates apply for this position and really extraordinarily well-qualified candidates. It was really difficult to get it down to the three, and clearly, all three of the candidates tonight have many accomplishments and many investments in the district and engagement, which is why you're here tonight. So I really appreciate your application. I know two of the three candidates are currently running for the school board, and I appreciate your willingness to step up. It's very difficult to run in position for this. I appreciate you for running as well.
Thank you, Director Simons. And myself, I want to echo that it, coming down to three candidates, was having my finger over different buttons at the very end, and it was very difficult to do. So, and again, thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, being willing to go through this process and willing to join us on the board in what are some of the most remarkable times we've seen. So again, thank you all very much, and...
Chair Ostafi, I'm sorry, you know me, I always come up with stuff at the, you know, later on. Obviously, I'm going to echo what everyone says. And in addition to that, I just want to say, whatever happens tonight, that I hope that we get to see more of each and every one of you, because you have gifts that our district can benefit from, and you're an asset to our district. So I'm looking forward to whatever happens tonight, working with all three of you in different capacities.
Thank you, Director Mosqueta-Jones. All right, hearing no further comments. Mr. Palmetier, will you now please take us through the selection process?
Sure. The district procedures allow us to make an appointment by consensus. And the only consensus that I heard is that maybe all three of you might be selected to serve on the board based on your presentations. Unfortunately, we can only fill one seat, and so that means that what we're going to do at this point is each board member is going to email me with their selection. I will read that selection. Ms. Lincoln will record that selection. And again, if there is a tie in our first round, we'll go with the top two vote-getters, and we will do another casting of ballots. So I'm asking board members now to please provide their information to me. I will check my emails, and then when I receive all votes, I will share them with you.
Tim, point of clarification.
Yes.
We're sending you one name?
Correct.
Okay. Another point of clarification, can we just do rock, paper, scissors? No, I'm just kidding.
I'm still awaiting one more email, so I will share momentarily.
Tim, this is Director Douglas. Have you received my email?
I have.
Thank you.
I've sent mine.
It was me, okay? I just... I told you, rock, paper, scissors, people. I'm sorry.
Don't worry, Jackie. I was just asking because my technology is like kind of rusty right now.
All right.
No, I just wanted to make sure it actually went through.
No, I get that. I just wanted to explain all the weird looks on my faces for the last two minutes.
I wasn't saying anything. I was playing poker over here. So I've received all of the ballots, and I will indicate the board member's name and then their vote. Heather Douglas votes John Bristol. Mike Ostafi votes John Bristol. Tanya Simons votes John Bristol. Kelsey Dawson-Walton votes Miyaman Kuegley. And Jackie Mosqueta-Jones votes for Miyaman Kuegley.
All right. So the candidate who receives the majority of votes will be appointed, and that is Mr. Bristol. John, congratulations. And Mr. Brooks and Ms. Kuegley, thank you very much. As Jackie said, we hope that you are working with this, and you're both running, so good luck with that. And I'm sure we'll be hearing and seeing more of you in the future. So thank you very much, and I'm sure there will be some information coming from Sherri or Tim regarding the final appointment process, Mr. Bristol. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Chair Ostafi? Yes, yes, Mr. Palmetier.
Just a point of clarification, then. A resolution will be based off of the voting that was done here today, and a copy of that resolution has been provided along with, I think, we had a late entry on the packet tonight, so that will be passed indicating a 3-2 vote.
Now it'll be passed tonight or at the next board meeting?
It will actually be passed tonight. There's 30 days, there's a 30-day time period for challenge by petition of any appointment made by the board. So that's the process that we'd be following.
Okay, so let me try to find that item.
For point of clarification, I think the vote, the vote is recorded here by my announcement, and it would also just be incorporated into a resolution. So I don't think we need to be, we need to go through and do a voice vote or a roll call vote based on the resolution. I think as a practical matter, the votes have been cast.
Okay, so we need to do nothing else, is that correct?
Nothing else. The resolution will be provided and submitted for, I believe, Heather Douglas's signature as board secretary.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Let me see, with that, we are up for adjournment of this special meeting. And before we adjourn, and just a reminder that we'll be logging out of this session and then reconvening by video conference for the work session which is following this, we'll take a 10- or 15-minute break before joining the work session video conference. Right now, I have us at 6:31, so let's call it 6:45 to get that started. Do we have a motion to adjourn at 6:31 PM?
So move, Director Simons.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Sherry, can you please take a roll call vote?
Director Dawson-Walton?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Mosqueta-Jones?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
And the motion passes 5 to 0.
And with that, we are adjourned, and I will see you all in 15 minutes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.